All right, I will call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. Can I get a motion to approve agenda? So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. All right, we have presentation of sewer easement.
Okay, so this, uh, there's a, there was a slight change.
And I'm gonna have you go back to the easement.
Do you wanna just expla- does everyone understand why we're doing this? What the easement is? Do you need any of that, or, okay?
Yeah, just so you understand, Dan Fowler, who lives in the house down at the end of the driveway here, their sewer is failing and they actually, um, there's two ways it can go. The south way, they would have ripped the street up and considerable, it would be pretty inconvenient. So what they're doing is they're having them actually go north and go across our property. And I'll kind of go through. Originally, they, this is the agreement that actually made, I'll post it.
A little further?
This is the legal description. Fortunately, we have a board member that reads a lot of legal descriptions and he called me today and he said, I don't know if you realize, but this is a pretty big area. So what Todd Argentsinger said, you can go ahead and approve this with pending the change in the legal description, which I have in front of you, which we have worked over.
So Brian, now do you wanna explain on the-
Yeah, so originally, I'm gonna try to, you know, not see. Where I've got darkened in with the pencil, that is gonna be the actual the easement. Originally, the way it was ripped, it was actually included all that.
Yeah.
And what we wanted to do is, we wanted to keep it so we're not messing with 50 years from now, we don't know if this, that, there won't be houses built there. And what we tried to do is just keep it so it's within a setback. And then you still have sewer, it's been on the property, but it wouldn't affect any setbacks or anything. So essentially, he has to come out of his house here, go down to the corner here, and then they'll go over to here. I don't think we can see it exactly on here. They'll come to about right here, angle right out to where they have connection. The other way, the only other way was going here, they would have ripped the whole street up.
Yeah, so that red line going up is where they're proposing to put the sewer line. So we just wanted to give them 25 feet along, you know, there, down and up, so it's like an L. Because otherwise, they were giving, getting 670 feet wide by 230 long, and I'm like, well, they really don't need that much.
You don't want them to have that on easement.
Well, no, you don't know down the road, someone else owns the property and then something changes and then you just, it could be, open yourself up.
They have to, they understand, they have to put it back to original shape. There is no cost to the district. They're actually, they won't have to tear up a little bit of sidewalk, but they said that should be insured. And they, the reason we wanted to press on the May meeting is they want to start as soon as school's out, so we're not messing with what's going on. Because the street has, it's usually the sewer's within versus property not in the street. Yeah. I think, I think Jeff Musick was here one day when we were talking to him. I probably can't give you the exact, but it's, see where the 3 is? That's above where the connection is. It's actually not in the street. They, so there's a small, they said they'd have to cut a little section of the street. It's a very small section.
But it has to go there, can't go closer to the street where it would take our easement off the property.
You're saying, could they do it down in the right of way?
Yeah, yeah.
They, the city said that you can't, now, this is something I'm not an expert on, but they needed to do where they did it. Because I'm, oh, I had to do it with the ball.
Yeah, and why are we doing it? Just to be good neighbors?
Well, they would have no sewer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, but that's what amounts to being good neighbors, huh?
Yeah.
And minimal impact on the city's traffic, too.
Yeah.
Good for city, good for neighbors.
We wanted to keep, this is actually the best for us, too, because they don't have to tear up an empty driveway or anything.
Well, you wanna keep it back, because who knows, down the road, maybe you build something down there or someone puts a house, maybe you sell that and the house, well, then it's in the right of way, because all of a sudden they go, oh, we got 170 feet, and they decide to take it up 50 feet away from the, well, now it's going down the middle of that property, that's not where you want it.
Well, see, that's the, the one contract where they had looked at it originally, wanted to go, wanted to go like from here, right down there, and it's, no, we're not doing it.
Shortest distance.
Dan Fowler would very much okay with it.
But if you gave them that, they could without coming back and asking us, so that's why.
With the original.
Thanks for catching that, Roger.
Good job, Roger.
I can't read legal descriptions.
Okay.
So, so essentially, when we get to the, the action item, we can approve it, because I did ask Todd. He said, we can approve it, subject to pending the legal description to follow what we were talking about.
Any comments from the public? I think we're good. You get a motion to adjourn? Huh? We don't know how. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Now, I will call the next meeting to order and determine if they have a quorum, so.
No one's here.
Roger, did you second the adjournment? Okay. I can't hear between those.
Okay. I'm sorry? Yeah, um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I will move on to discussion items.
Okay, uh, just real quick, I wanted to share that, uh, on the policies that we approved last week, first reading, uh, there's a district annual report that's in there, so that is done annually and it is listed on our website. So I just wanted to, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, because you guys can see it, but it does have enrollment trends, um, financial trends over the last five years, uh, taxable valuations, income taxes paid, our solvency ratio, a lot of budget information. And then, um, it also talks about how many years teachers have been in the district. It talks about our extracurricular participation, dropout rates, our graduation rates. And then finally, at the end, there's a link there for the Iowa school performance, which gives all of our academic data, if anyone wants to see it. And you can see that through the years and you can compare that as well. So that's, um, all public information. But I just wanted to let you guys know that it's there on the website. And we are in the process of switching over to a new website, which is going to be much more user friendly. So right now, they're moving the data. So it's on the old one and not on the new.
No, that's just for this. It's a new website.
It is called, I'll tell you, Roger, when I think of it. Kylie, um, Kylie has researched quite a bit and it's a good, it's just a much user friendly, user friendly one.
I looked over that, this is very colorful.
Oh, you did, yeah.
I didn't think I'd print it out, because it would exhaust all my print. All my, my, but anyway, I was gonna ask, I thought it was very interesting as far as this certified and the beds and the enrollment, uh, I thought that was really, really interesting. So over the last 10 years, is it correct then, the certified is really what we have in the district? Is that correct, versus the beds is what's potential for the whole district?
Certified is our actual resident students.
Okay.
And beds is, I always call it butts and seats.
Butts and, okay.
So the beds is what we get, um, we're funded for the beds. We're funded for both, but beds is the final part.
To oversimplify it, Jim, this, the, the beds is a certified plus your open enrollment in, less your open enrollment out. It's not quite that simple, but that's the simple thing.
It looks like in, in the beds, we're, we're losing about 12 students a year over the 10 years on the average. Is that, because if I take 2015 minus 2025 and take 10% of it, it's about 12 students a year that there we're missing. On the certified, it's six students a year. And so I, I think it's worth, because we're interested in strategic ideas and management, and what's this place look like in five years or 10 years? And I think it's worth, you know, realizing our strengths and weaknesses.
What's, what's the change in the open enrollment? Is that fewer students in general, or are they going somewhere else?
The, the open enrollment, 1.3 in the certified and minus four in the, in, over the last 10 years, there's a minus four every year in the.
I think he's asking if there's a pattern.
What's the purpose, or what's the reason behind the drop?
Yeah, yeah, and what do we look like in 10 years?
So there it is, right there. So on the left, the open enrollment, it's hard to see there, but, um, so 2015 had 159 in and 43 out. So black is in, red's out. And then this year, it's gone up some, so it's 119 in and 56 out.
So I have a question for the administration. Why? In a nutshell.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a hard question, Jim.
I know, I meant it to be hard.
Same thing.
Yeah, no, I think part of that is enrollments around all rural areas are declining, so they, so the, the IKM Mannings don't have as many students either as they did that count to us. Um, and part of the other piece is, we have some that have, just not necessarily on open enrollment in and out, but some parents are choosing to homeschool, or they choose to do things online versus switching, switching schools. Um, I will say, too, that 20, uh, 2023 and 24, the deadline for open enrolling from one district to another, there, there was no deadline, whereas usually it was March 1st, so you had to say, and so that was kind of a definite in or out. Um, this year, that deadline was back, which I would assume is why we're up to 119 from 107. So, um, but definitely, we can ask some of those that go out.
And that would be the more, the reason for the out.
Yep, that would be the reason for the out, yeah.
Or you could probably tell by looking, could you tell by looking at who had rolled out? What it was.
Families, graduation.
A few years ago, we actually- Or if it was, what, the homeschool, you know, how much of that was actually the issue? A few years ago, we actually took, looked at all the open enrolled outs and kind of looked at what, okay, where do they live? For instance, and I'm not picking on a district, but Boyer Valley, there was, I think, three families, I believe, at that time. Um, and they literally lived all quite a bit closer. They would have been, I don't know, how far are you? Four or five miles closer to Boyer Valley than they are. Right, and these, these, we had one that was five minutes from the school.
Yeah.
We had one that was about seven minutes from the school. So though, a lot of them, you can tell it's maybe just geographics. Um, I think a lot of them from Avoca, we had the same thing. Um, I don't know if I can remember them all, but that's the two I can recall off the top of my head. We actually looked at, okay, who is it and why? And a lot of, probably most of them, most of them, the answer is gonna be geographics.
And we can do an audit, we can do an audit and find that out with the ones that we have now.
Yeah, I think the other question to consider, then, is with some of the recent legislation, are we at an increased risk here as we look into the next five years versus what we've been trending anyway? And if so, what does that mean?
To set the market ourselves better.
Yeah, how do we?
And how, what, how does that look financially? Is, is it?
Well, I mean, when your beds goes down and your, it, it stands to reason that your beds is gonna go down if your certified's going down. It just stands to reason. If, if there's a difference there, it could be as simple. We get a lot of kids from, I'll call it, north of Jacksonville, north up into the Irwin area, and you had a lot of those families, the kids, some of them, they aged out. You just, well, same families are there, they, they don't have any kids going to school. So I mean, I don't know that you could put your thumb on one reason, Jim.
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting to know whether it's population decline, or enrolling to private schools, or homeschooling, or, um, less of the, of the open enrollment. It'd be, I think it's a great audit to do.
And actually, it comes into play, the parochial school, although I don't know that you could say that probably affects us a lot from year to year, because they may fluctuate five total students, but it's never, I don't know, that's not a big reason fluctuation from year to year, because they just don't change that much.
I think one of the other things, too, is next year, when we offer preschool full days, well, that will make a difference in our enrollment as well, because Shelby County Catholic does offer it full days, so they stay there for maybe a few years, so we'll actually hopefully get some of those families for their entire 13 years here.
And I don't know if this is popular, but I'm really in favor of competition. I think we need to, to increase our game to get as many students say, I wanna come here. And you only do that with competition. That's my personal opinion, I don't think everybody shares that.
We're curious about why they're opening rolling out. I'm actually curious as to why they're coming in. And then we find our strengths, you know? If we know why they wanna come here as opposed to somewhere else, we find our strengths more than that. And we make a choice for that.
It could be things other than geography.
Right, it could be.
Yeah, it is. But athletics, I think, is one of the, is one of the very important ones, isn't it?
We hope it's more education than education.
Yes, that would be nice.
All of it.
Right, right, right.
I mean, it all.
All right, well, good, yeah, that was good information.
Okay, that's there.
Facility committee update?
Nothing, nothing-
We have occupancy.
Really new, we do have occupancy in the new elementary, so we're able to move things just into the middle of the rooms, because they've still got some things to do, the millwork's not there, but that's helpful for the teachers. So Jeff's had a great plan for his teachers to free up, free them up of some time so they can pack and don't have to do it all outside of school hours. Casey's there, paint, there's paint on the wall in the second phase, so it's getting there. And then they're just ready for us to be out there so they can just shut everything down and start working on the last part.
Cyclone Village is leaving.
Yes.
Not soon enough.
The first weekend, it's gonna be gone.
Not soon enough, Casey.
Otherwise, and then, um, I think we've got everything ready to roll for Bill's, the safety vestibule, and then in the middle school, too, the library is getting a facelift as part of the bond issue. So they've got something we can do, too. So we're all moving.
With the facility update, last call?
Oh, yeah, last call down the hall, thank you. Um, we are having last call down the hall on Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:30, and we hope everyone can come. And you can go and look at the old intermediate building or Westridge, and then we'll also give tours of the new intermediate building. So we're excited and hope we can have a lot of people here.
All right. Student accolades?
Okay, Jeff, do you wanna go first?
Okay, so with capturing kids' hearts, we give awards to every grade level. And perseverance was last month, I think perseverance was last, maybe it was April. Um, so that's just a picture of the kids that get that. That's been really cool this year with the capturing kids' hearts. We usually give awards like citizen of the week and stuff like that, but this has been an extra one for each of the components. Um, so it's been pretty cool and obviously, the kids have been proud of it. Um, and the whole thing is to just spread that. So you see, you know, it's kind of like the competition. Somebody else got it, maybe I can get another two, and they can learn from each other, so. Um, so that's what this picture is. This picture here is of the primary students for, um, the Special Olympics, the official Special Olympics competition got canceled by the state group in council of loss. So we staged our own. So that's what that is, that's them. It's, um, we did it with the intermediate and the primary, and we had our own Olympics and played music and introduced them, and it was really cool. The kids made signs, they're, they're holding some of the signs that the kids made for them. So, um, it was a very personalized Special Olympics event. It was really cool. Um, over here is our first graders went over and, uh, I think they just got to get in on some snacks that they were making over at the high school. It's always cool when you can go across the street and do that. So they take it up to their principal, they like to eat cookies. I think there's more.
I'm going, sorry.
Is there more?
Yes. Casey? There we go.
Well, maybe there were, I thought there was pictures underneath.
Two more, there are, right there.
Oh, well, those are it, okay. So this one's really cool, um, I didn't recognize the students. So we had students, two students, Amber and Scarlett, um, and this is a tribute to them, as well as Mrs. Piro, our teacher. So, um, she submitted entries, she submitted 10 entries into the state competi- these, I don't know if they're competitions, they're more like galleries. And two of our students were selected by their artwork. Now, um, digging into it a little deeper, Scarlett did an ocean painting, and she was actually, hers was picked to be at Jordan Creek Mall, um, where they had a display. And that, that's what hers was a painting of. And then, um, Amber was actually selected to the governor's, built, or to the, the governor's selection, which is a little higher status, if you will. And hers was a picture of, um, a building. And it's pretty cool. So, and so we had two get selected, one to the governor's. So this is Scarlett's, that was the one that got picked, picked in Scarlett's.
Very neat.
Isn't that cool? And then this was, this one's not quite as clear. This is the building that was in the governor's selection. So it was really cool on those two. Um, and then, oh, yeah, the bee, uh, the bee water and stations. I mean, it's amazing, when they see bees outside, they have me come running with raid. But I think these were for the good bees. Um, so just gardener, you know, working with the gardener group, working with the community, that kind of thing. So, uh, that was really neat. Um, yeah, I think there was the only two, the other thing I wanted to bring up, this isn't really a student accolade, but the students voted on which playground they liked best, um, for a new playground. And it, we had, the adults narrowed it down to two companies and two choices, uh, based on the specs and comparability and all that kind of stuff, and then we let the kids pick from there. And I think they, it was like 472 to 29.
Wow.
They voted, so the kids actually got to cast a vote, and, um, so that's pretty cool. So they got to narrow down and, um, figuring out what, which direction we're gonna go with that, so.
And to put a plug in for that, too, we are selling bricks from the intermediate building for a fundraiser to raise some more money for, we have some of the money from the bond issue, but playgrounds are expensive.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Very, surface is your most expensive part.
Yeah, the surfacing is terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's expensive.
Yeah.
The, what you were saying, one of the, um, the company that we selected thinks it'd be a cool idea for us to put a little cyclone football, little kids' football stadium in our area. When you said that, I was like, have you been talking to my guys? I was like, yeah, I bet you would love to have us do that. I wanted to put a replica in our playground up there, which would be super cool.
Where at, in the, in that commons area, or what?
No, where it would be is, so where the current Westridge is sitting, where the north wing is, that's where our, um, playground is going. But then the rest of the building, um, from the offices clear to the south, is just gonna be flat, grassy area. He's like, that'd be really cool to have a replica, elementary-sized Merrill Field. And I'm like, yeah, that would be really cool.
Oh, I need to find a dome.
I know, so. I don't know who Merrill was, but I don't know, is he still around? I assume that's his last name, though.
Thanks.
Family is, though.
Bill?
Yeah, the first picture up there is a picture of Mr. Paulson and the middle school band. They had a concert last week, so that's Mr. Paulson's last concert here. We do have a new director hired, John Benson, will be taking his place. And he was actually in attendance for that concert, so that was really well attended and all the kids sounded great. It was a 5th through 8th grade, um, concert there last week. And tonight, there's a middle school vocal concert. And the next picture over is some girls in Mrs. Holloway's ag class, where they were doing some studying on genetics, and they actually had some baby chicks there, so they were excited when those came out and, uh, kind of gave some real life looks to some of the genetic studies that they were doing with that project. The next one is, uh, a couple of boys, they're doing some research on the dust bowls. They were reading a story in 7th grade language arts about the dust bowl, the devastation that it had on society, basically, back then, on agriculture and economically and stuff. So that was based off of a story they were reading in 7th grade language arts. Then the bottom two pictures are two groups of readers. There's a competition that we have, some kids volunteer that they wanna be part of it. It's called Battle of the Books. And so there's 20 award-winning books that are identified, and these kids that are, that love reading, uh, sign up to, um, be on a team. Then they kind of divvy out some of the book titles to read. And then there's a trivia contest amongst all the schools in southwest Iowa, and they get to answer as a team. So there's a question, it might be about the storyline, it might be about a character, it might be a statement or phrase that some character in one of the books said. And so then they have to pick what book that came from, and then they kind of get scored, so it's kind of like a little Jeopardy game. Uh, the team Kool-Aid over there on the right, they actually made it past the first round and then qualified, uh, to participate against some more teams. So that's the 7th grade team over there, and then they ended up finishing third in that competition. So that's really good for those kids that really have a love and passion for, uh, for reading and be able to compete, uh, with their skills in, in literacy.
All right, you gotta go to the closet. Couple dizzy. Casey?
Yeah, we've been in Cisby High School. Uh, first is Harley Place First in the Iowa Game Jam. Um, he designed a video game and submitted it, and so that's a first place finish in a design video game. Um, our STEM students, we have the grow towers in the, throughout the high school, have been growing flowers for a while, and have been trying to have enough grown flowers through our authentic learning classes. And then the STEM students printed 3D pots, they had them designed, the pots, and then print them, pop them with our homegrown flowers, and then they got them to teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week and/or the week after. So that was pretty good. I think there was some trouble in paradise, I'm getting all the pots printed out at the same time, so. But anyway, they got that done, that was a pretty neat gift. Um, our National Honor Society does a cleanup, and it's National Honor Society helps to organize it. Members go, but then additional students also go, and so we had, I forget the number, 150 kids or something go out and just work throughout the community and cleaning up yards and whatnot. So J.B. Anderson is the sponsor for that, who does a great job on getting them all lined up and organized, and they were busy for, for a fact day. Senior walkthrough, this was last Wednesday. half-day. Senior walk-through, this was last Wednesday. And we have the seniors before they have graduation practice. They come and walk through the elementary in their caps and gowns and high fives and cheers. And it's a, it's at least a good way to model the end results for kids to see their, those role models just on their last day of school. So, and then graduation was yesterday. No pictures there because of the short turnaround, but it was a very nice ceremony. Things went really well. Thanks to everyone who's there. And had a great senior class. So sad to see them go, but exciting to see where life takes them. And then last is Caitlin Ryan. She is a senior and she was inducted into the Golden School, School National Honor Society. That would be like the social media honor society. There was also an article in the paper about her and just her, that passion she found through our authentic learning, social media, marketing and all of that. So and that, the Golden School is through, I think it's through Class Intercom, which is the platform we use for managing our social media through the school. So.
And then at the district level, we, and Casey can talk a little bit about this too. We had high school students partner with Shelby County Wellness Alliance. And they did the other crosswalks that were downtown on the square. So very fun project for the kids. Last year was the first year. This year, when I went down there, they were like, oh my gosh, it's going so much better. They just had it all figured out after one year of going through the process. And they had a lot more kids involved, which made it much easier too. And the city also helps us because they put that white paint down at first. So one of the things that they're trying to problem solve right now is the other ones have kind of come up. So they think that's more of the, like when the snow, the snowplows go over, that it's scraping it up versus, so they're just trying to work with the city to figure out how to do that and then to touch those up. So they're, it's exciting. And the new art teacher, hopefully, will just keep that, keep that rolling. Students there receive the Seal of Bileiteracy, which is a very big thing. And they can basically pass a test in another language besides English. And it's, it's a, it's a big deal. So that's a great thing for them. Kindness Day pep rally.
That's with the pep rally though. That's, that's the Kindness Day Spring Carnival.
Oh, the carnival. Yep. Okay. So there was lots of people at the carnival. And there is Lerner Man in the dunk tank right there that was at the carnival. And it was freezing. I'm just gonna say. I was in that dunk tank too. And it was cold. So it was Casey.
Forty-seven degrees.
Forty-seven.
How come pictures not viewed?
I don't know. It was, yeah.
And they dunked us a lot.
I was gonna say, how would you know?
A lot of people did.
Yeah, we remove the linebacker for high school kids next year. Six feet is not far enough for them to throw.
It was chilly. Finally, just the social media, we're trying to promote all of the new teachers that we've hired so far and all of the retirees. So we appreciate both the new and those coming in and coming out. So just on there. Okay, that's accolades.
Personnel report?
Yeah. We're getting there, you guys. We have just a few resignations. Emily Dull is a para in the middle school and she helped us out this year. She's pursuing a career in law. So she's, she's going and moving on that way. And Julie Levinson, special education teacher, is leaving us as well. So we have hired three new teachers and we have an interview this Wednesday for a elementary teacher. And then hopefully that will go well. We only have two teachers left to hire, Spanish and a primary school teacher here. We'll keep working on those classified coaching and positions there. I actually think I have the cook hired as well, but haven't put the offer in. So we're, we're plugging along. We're, I think we're sitting pretty good this year at this time.
The para positions will stay probably on there over the summer because we don't want to hire someone right now and then they don't really start and they won't do more all summer. So we'll keep those on there and start looking for those more seriously a little bit later.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you motion to approve the personnel report? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We'll move on to approval of the memorandum of understanding with Iowa Western Community College.
So this is just an annual agreement with Iowa Western with the college courses that we're able to offer for our students. Fees did go up a little bit. And they did for all, all that Iowa Western serves. So we have those budgeted. And we just appreciate the collaboration with them and are thankful that we have them, that to offer to our students too, which is another piece we can market down the road.
Can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next up is approval of the 2025 graduates.
This is just our list of graduates. It's just annually approved by the board.
Will you approve the graduates for 2025?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We will then have the approval of the memorandum of understanding with IJAG.
So there's, next year, we get an IJAG teacher for, at no cost, based on the grant through the state. So we'll have two IJAG teachers at the high school and we just hired her.
Her.
Which is exciting. And then we'll have one at the middle school. So we'll have three full-time teachers. And our bill to IJAG for all three teachers will be $50,000, which is a really good deal. So the following year, then we will be, if, if we want to keep the high school teacher, the extra that we have, we will be charged $25,000. So that's still a very good deal for the services that they provide.
Can I get a motion to approve? Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Now we have approval of the sewer easement.
We had discussion on it a little bit. We had a discussion. I'll move to approve the sewer easement with the little description that we read as follow. Beginning at the northwest corner of the Grant East property, said point beginning approximately 33 feet west of the east line of the northwest quarter of section 13, then west 70 feet, then north 25 feet, then east 70 feet, and then south 25 feet to the place of beginning. And also beginning at the northeast corner of the Grant East property, said point being approximately 33 feet west of the east line of the northwest quarter of section 13, then west 25 feet, and then north 240 feet, then east 245 feet, then south, back south, 230 feet to the place of beginning. Said area referral to the easement area here.
I didn't get all that.
Yeah.
Second the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approval of high school ovens.
Catherine? Yeah. So unfortunately, our bids weren't apples to apples here. So we are due for new ovens in the high school. And our budget is so that we can afford them. So we would like to move forward with the ones from Wilson Restaurant because you'll see that they are a little bit more expensive here. But the installation for the Rapid Soul Cell was not included. So we've, for a couple of reasons, we feel like we should go with the Wilson one. First of all, all of our other ovens in the school district are from them and they're good to work with. And I'm gonna let Brian tell you about the budget.
We, in, in the nutrition fund, it's annually looked at by the DE. And if you have over a certain amount of, in, in, what I, I don't want to say reserves, but if your fund balance is over a certain amount, they're saying you really need to go improve your equipment, you improve your meals, whatever it is. Well, we've kind of looked at it a little bit holistically. We, and we have the funds there. We have, we have the funds to do it. And this was probably our biggest need equipment-wise. And that's the reason we went with this. And that way we have updated ovens all three places. And, and truthfully, when you have over a certain amount, they say you really do need to have a spend-down, spend-down plan. And Catherine and I came up with two or three different things and this was on the top of it. So that's the reason we went with this.
You said the word installation, did you, or is?
Installation.
I see. The other two weren't installed then?
They didn't give them.
They didn't include the installation?
They didn't include the pricing. I mean, like the one, the middle one you can see, they just gave us the bids for the ovens.
So, I mean, they, they didn't bid installing them, is what you're saying?
It wasn't included.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
And then, so the other one for $44,823, so was that just, you was, I guess?
It, it was.
Because it was $41,890, but then the total was $44. So were all those other things included or not included? Or was there going to be additional cost to install?
All the additional, all those things would be additional.
Oh, okay.
But I get his question. He's asking because.
Why the oven price does not match the total?
Because there, there are just, there, it's hard because there are little bits and pieces for every single thing. If I would have put every single thing, it was probably something like extra stands or some additional features that they would have given us.
It was additional features. It wasn't anything to do that they didn't have charted under.
None of those other things, the warranty or the installation kit.
Isn't that the one we had the problems with with the equipment too? I can't see who it is.
It's the Keaton restaurant one. And that's the one that was, and they're from a faraway place. So just to ship them here would have cost us a lot of money too. So that's why, Roger.
We've had good, good experience with Wilson too. There's, you don't, we've had bad experiences with other vendors in the, on this side too. So.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the high school ovens.
I'll second.
Do we want to specify with the Wilson's bid with that?
From Wilson.
Oh, from Wilson. I'm sorry.
I'll still second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are now at approval of the Rising Hope Academy contract with the GH AEA.
So this is a collaboration that we have with Green Hills AEA. We host their therapeutic classroom here. And so we have students that come from other school districts that, that have come here. And it is a specific level three therapeutic classroom for students in grades first through fifth. We, this is our third year of having it. And we can do, we can decide annually if we want to continue with it or not. So we, we decided we're going to go one more year. We, we don't pay for anything. What we do get out of it is if we have a student that qualifies, we get pre-tuition for them. So it's a, it's, it's a big deal. It's a lot of money that we're saving. And we also don't have to transport them to an Omaha school or another therapeutic school outside of the district. We also have them write-in. If we don't have a student that qualifies, that we would charge them rent each month. So as of right now, we've had students in the program, which has benefited us. So.
Can I get a motion to approve?
All motion to approve the Rising Hope Academy.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approval of contract for transferring of state funds with the GH AEA.
So this is going to be probably annual moving forward with the new legislation. And this has to deal with the special education funding that used to go from us to the, directly to the AEA's. And now the legislation says it comes to the school district first and then we have to give them 90%. So this is the agreement that all of the school districts and the AEA's, in every AEA, but this is our Green Hills AEA agreement, that we agree by law to give them the 90% once we get the pull-out.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the contract for transferring of state funds with the GH AEA. Second that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next up, we have approval of the partnership agreement with the ISU extension.
So Terry Chornaten reached out to Catherine and I through the Iowa State Extension about a couple of different things. And one of the things was that they had in the past, always had a partnership agreement with the school district, the county, or the fair board and themselves. And it hadn't been updated in a while. So this is the actual new agreement. And I did make sure that, there's lots of responsibilities of our FFA program. So I made sure that our FFA teachers were fine with everything that was marked. And they said they were. So we'll just move forward with this. And it does give us an option to fill in this, when we want to review this again. So I think we'll just say every two years probably, because if we have new FFA, or I just don't want to get bound to the requirements if it's not something that we want to do. So if that's okay with you guys. I mean, we can make it annually if you want, or I just thought if we did it every couple of years.
That form looked kind of complicated. So you had to go through all those boxes?
I did not. They had already had it filled out, but I took it to the FFA teacher. I'm pretty sure it's exactly what it's been before. I just took it to the FFA teachers and made sure this is exactly what they did. And they said they did. So.
Thank you for that. Can we get a motion to approve partnership agreement with ISU extension? So moved?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next up is approval of fiscal year 2026 28E agreement, other BM, sped, and HR sharing agreement, Harland and IKM Manning.
Sorry, business manager. Sorry.
Business manager. Yeah, other business managers. So this is an operational sharing agreement with IKM Manning, which we have others with AHST and EEHK. And this one would be, it'd give us 10 operational sharing chips, which is 10 additional students worth of funding. So approximately $80,000 next year. Two, I would provide the special education director services as needed. Catherine would provide HR consultant needs. And then this would keep, Brian is going to go semi-retired. He's going to go halftime next year. So this would give us an opportunity to utilize their, their business manager as well if needed for that 20%. So we have talked with their superintendent and all of their other people. And basically, a lot of work can be done within our offices here. It's not like we have to physically be up there. So that would be most likely what we would do and just help consult from afar if needed. And we'd have Ashley help us as well.
Is this halftime deal with Mr. Goobles? Is this a new development?
No, no.
Was it always going to be that way next year, halftime?
Oh, I didn't know that.
How many-year contract is that?
One.
Half.
That's called transition.
And where is the other half coming from? Have you decided or are you working on that?
Well, part of it is, with me being here less, that's part of the reason we would have the extra support here. Because there are certain things will have to fall off my plate. And we feel like with the staff we have and having a little bit extra help there, we should be able to pull them off.
And, and is there a name for the other? Or you're still going to hire for the other half of you?
No. This, we, we would fill it with the staff we have.
With the staff.
Me, and then the sharing.
So you haven't selected anybody officially?
To, to cover me eventually?
To cover the other half of you.
No.
Okay. That's just my question.
Takes many people to replace half of Brian.
I think part of the other thing, Jim, is that Brian was doing all the facilities and management stuff when I very first got here. And we've moved that more to Mike there. So we've taken some off of this plate that way. And then, yes, we will have to advertise for a school business manager or school business officer, probably. probably in December or January next year. We'll get that out so that we can maybe get someone hired and they can work hand-in-hand with Brian for that last part of the year.
There is a plan, that's nice, yeah, yeah. I imagine there would be, organized as you guys are. All right, can we get a motion to approve?
From a discussion standpoint, now that there's a motion on the table, I continue to have the same concerns about our school executive being into another district with a portion of your time. And I says 20%, I'm guessing it probably realistically won't be that. I'm willing to support it for the year and see how it goes. But, you know, I wonder if we devoted that time to something else, if we wouldn't come out ahead as a district versus the cost savings aspect that we're tackling with this, so.
Sure, yeah. An annual, so we can definitely look at it.
Understood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was gonna say, Pete said.
All right, policy review schedule, first reading. This one was short and sweet this month.
Welcome.
Yeah.
It does have the governor's cell phone policy piece is here, so we will be good to go with that.
How is that gonna affect us?
It's not, I mean, we do a lot of what we already have to do anyway. Elementary, you don't, they, they aren't allowed to have them, middle school either. So it's just more at the high school level. The piece is basically that you have a policy that says you're not to use them during instructional times unless it's very specified. And that we have alternatives for students with IUPs or 504s or if it's, if it's written in there. And also what are the consequences if it doesn't hap, if it does happen? So we just have to, and that's in our handbook, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the first reading? Get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Got that, Catherine?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. And then policy review schedule, second reading. We have notes on here, striking.
Oh, that was mine. Yeah, so basically, this was, and we talked about this last time, but on all of these, we just strike.
Stroke.
Stroke? Jeez. Struck the gender identity from all of the policies based on the new legislation for no DEI.
Move to approve the second reading of the policies?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, for me.
And now we are to the consent agenda. Didn't really have a whole lot of questions from the side. Do you want to have any questions?
I was gonna ask, who is R.E.W.? 71,000? They are the ones that are doing demolition and abatement. Oh, okay. So, but they were under, they were under, were they under construction? Most of those other guys were under construction or something? Well, see, they're actually engaged by Shai Patterson, who was doing the abatement and demolition. And so they did all, and they did all the bidding. I never heard of R.E.W.'s. I'm not sure even where they're from. They're very, they were really thrilled that they got it. And they were actually very reasonable, too. Which we like. Yes, we do.
Yeah.
That was my only question. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I don't know how we'll handle this one. Next up is adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.